All right, calling to order the June sixteenth, twenty twenty five East Town Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Can everyone rise from political holdings?
First, ways this to the fire United States or to the bottom of which stands one nation, the grand house in the middle of this school with the three angels.
Okay, first up, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wants to allow? Um, for a prayer or as an exception to a group?
The loop.
No motion, I'll second. Um, any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have any? All right, moving on to board motions, presentations and resolutions. First up, we have in the resignation and certificate of recognition for Susan Lee. Yes, Susan has been a dedicated member of our EAC, which is the Environmental Council Advisory Council for the township. We appreciate all the work you've done for the township and we're going to present you with a certificate of resignation, uh, recognition. Uh, for all the supervisors of the township. So we appreciate everything that you've done and thank you so much.
And thank you.
Hey, um, next up on the agenda, we have the responsible contractor ordinance. Andy, I see you prepared a demo here. But just to kind of rehash, um, this is something the township has been considering, um, both in terms of its aim, in terms of supporting businesses that support its workers, um, but also to ensure that township is receiving, um, you know, contractor services that are, um, done in a workmanship manner. Um, meaning that the workers who are working on our township projects are properly trained. Really to ensure that the township is getting bank for its pop, meaning that the money that we spend on contractors before contractors know what they're doing. And Andy, I see you prepared um, memo here with a motion to advertise the RCO.
Yeah, and I can go through a couple of items.
Sure, that would be great.
Um, so based on the board's discussion and and you've looked at this several times, what we did was we more or less tracked much of what you see as a standard model that, uh, most regional municipalities who are doing it are using a similar version that really the two pieces, I think, of of policy interests that are most under discussion in these past meetings is what is your threshold in terms of what you generally want to apply to? Is it, is it an ordinance that applies to the big projects? So to that end, at least in the draft, and this is all ultimately up to all of you, um, whether you're ready to move forward, what you want to change, what you want to advertise. But if you advertised it as written, it would really focus on big picture, construction, renovation, demolition projects where the cost of the project's over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then in light of, uh, comments you've heard from staff in terms of difficulty in procuring, uh, work that is especially, in some cases, uh, sort of service work. Uh, we talked about snow plowing, um, landscaping. Um, also a lot of your, uh, road work, which is important, but relatively straightforward. All of those, if you look at contracts that might be, um, multi-year or if you look at the broadest scope of those kinds of projects, I think there's some concern as to whether you would be running into the ability to get bids. Um, or be able to timely complete that in progress. So at least in the draft, those are really the three, uh, what I call carve-outs. Now, you still have to, it it's required to be bid under, uh, state law in the second-class township code, you're still going to bid it. It's just the the specific requirements of this ordinance, which include things like, um, the contractor has to have, um, certain apprentice or training programs, things like that, which for sure is going to apply to the kind of contractors you want. Let's say they're renovating a building, you know, you want skill HVAC people, firefighters, electricians, and I think that's really at least the draft east town version focuses on that bigger kind of project.
Very good. And I know that was kind of a point of discussion the last time this came up and it's ensuring that, uh, um, we weren't going to lose bidders, um, and I don't think this process really does that. And I think more importantly, um, you know, I I think it allows us to properly assess who's submitting bids. And we can always select the lowest bid so long as they have qualified individuals working for them, even if they don't necessarily meet the qualifications of the ordinance, correct? Meaning that they don't meet the very minute, whatever technical aspects there are that we're requiring them to submit. There, there does appear to be like a workmanship workaround, meaning that a firm that applies is technically competent, they can.
Yeah, there is, there is some language, um, that gives you some flexibility, although if if you're in, if you're into those bigger projects, the the standard flexibility is if you went out to bid twice and you couldn't get anything, um, then this wouldn't apply at all. But even if it does apply, or there is some language that, um, talks about your ability to be flexible if the project requires it.
Well, I I'm in favor of it. Does anyone have any comments that want to add it or?
One, two, two things. One is, again, I would like it to be lower, but I'll go wherever, you know, where we can get as good. And two is, well, three things, then. Two is, um, it's since we have to pay the lowest price, it's always important that we get the best quality for what we're getting. And I think this is an important step in that direction. And three is, I know, I know there's concern over, well, if we pass this, we won't be able to get anybody because nobody will have the criteria. But we pass this, other townships are passing it. The bid, the companies will change. They will, they will get the resource they need to bid on these projects. Because they'll see other people getting them. So I don't think we can think of it as all else staying equal. So I think it's an important step.
And Don, John and Joe might have some input, but I think the feedback that we generally get in the Chester County and the and the band of suburban counties was that with the big projects, it hasn't, we haven't heard about um, not being able to get bidders or that it it grinds procurement to the whole. Where we have had and heard about the problems is if people use sort of the straight low bidding threshold or apply it to everything you bid, um, that's where we're hearing the problems. And I think, I think the ordinance sort of navigates that in the way that you all discussed a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I think with the flexibility that you mentioned, Andy.
Where is that flexibility?
Getting no bids, I think we're going to run into a situation where we only get high.
Uh, it's in the, uh, it's in the last section on page eight. Uh, the header is emergencies. But it talks about an emergency or fiscal circumstances that render the requirements on daily burdens and and you can award a procurement contract without applying all the terms of the ordinance. And section ninety point eight.
Uh, Alex?
Alex, if you're not able to come in here.
Say something.
I see.
All right, now I'm also having internet issues, but yeah, I think we're not going to run into issues where we won't get bids. I think we're going to run into issues where all of our bids are going to be high from now on, where we would previously get five bids, now we'll get two and they'll just be the two highest bids.
Um, well, I mean, I I don't, I I think that's kind of a hypothetical problem. It doesn't seem to be a problem that other townships have encountered. Um, at least as per, you know, what Andy has seen in the in the county and the surrounding township. So, you know, that is an issue we were mentioned, that's something we can address down the road, but you know, I I don't think that's a reason, that also not a reason to report this.
Don just gave us an example of a procurement they did a month or two ago and they ran into that exact issue where they they don't think that that the contractors that were the two or three lowest bidders out of the five or six would qualify for this ordinance. So it's right there, the the, you know, half of the procurement, the the cheapest options are not able to meet this. Then, so we end up with more expensive procurement. They'll only get the highest bids that you have there. And I particularly think that's going to be true for some of the cheaper procurement. So I don't support it being two hundred and fifty thousand. The smaller procurements, um, don't fall into this item where we only end up with one or two bids, they're very high. That's my concern.
Still. Um, any other board comment? Well, I'm in favor. I'm comfortable making a motion to approve, uh, the ordinance that's been prepared. About a second. Any other board comment?
And procedurally, the action, approval action denied, so that it's advertised that it's public media. We have the public notice and put us in, you can find.
Very good. Hearing no additional supervisor comment, any public comment? Right, none, um, all in favor of approving the ordinance? Say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
May.
Yeah. Um, okay.
We'll get an advertiser.
Very good. Um, moving on to item is basically a beautiful branch application. Want to tell you about that?
Sure. Sure. So this came across our radar from, uh, uh, work our sporting groups. Uh, this is a simple, straightforward range, zero match needed, it's just for trees planted in public spaces, uh, funded through the giant corporation, giants. So, uh, because it's one that is allocating resources, township, people support, if you have a patient, uh, the recommendation would just be that we apply four thousand dollars with trees. Uh, and then you're using your existing street tree planting program as a badge, I think that was not required, it just makes your application stronger, so.
But, yeah, I think that's something. Well, I know I support it, I don't have those feelings, but, um, is that something in motion or do it by consensus?
I think you can do it by consensus after hearing.
Alex, do you have anything to add to that?
So, yes, I'm. Sure, Don, it says that it has to be spent by November thirty. The street tree program is sure, but November thirty.
Uh, we can at least do this portion of it. And I didn't, four thousand dollars, we get it, we that if it's a tree, so it's, yeah, we we can certainly explain this small application, shouldn't have any worries.
So we're good with that, bringing it forward then?
We'll do it.
Okay. And just to note, there's all, yeah, all the comment. Yep. Okay, um, moving on to the item, the Berkeley Road sidewalk. How are you?
Uh, exactly. A couple of months ago, we brought forward that, uh, the uh, Devon sidewalk MTF, uh, funded project was currently under, but drastically under budget, uh, so much so that we wanted to look at adding additional link to the, um, assistive grant funding project. So we had the teams go out on, you know, with your approval, approval to do a site survey of the uh, right away north of Berkeley between Devon and Dorset uh, for installation of sidewalk, uh, on the north side of Berkeley. Uh, this will create a link from, uh, several more neighborhoods back to the train station, uh, back to your shopping centers, back to your, uh, utility area. So with the funds that are still available from the state, uh, multimodal transportation fund grant, we're looking to move forward with this if we so desire.
Yeah, I mean sidewalks are definitely a priority for me, I think, for the sports, so I think that's a good idea in favor of that.
The action here I just had is, are we interested?
Yeah, so a motion to authorize us to go out to bid with it. Correct, John?
Yes.
Time that would leave you for you would be as a a contract in action, I didn't think.
Okay, correct.
So, but you have direction. Yeah, so, but a motion to, yeah, a motion.
I'll make that motion, that's second. Any other board comment?
There's a couple of questions. So, um, that's a real thing in the development, those houses there, they didn't put sidewalks in.
Uh, so this is on the north side, there are no properties on the north side. Or there's no houses on the north side.
Oh, so the other side has the properties.
The other side doesn't have a sidewalk, but the properties are on the south side of Berkeley between Devon and Dorset. There, there had been a structure at the corner of Devon and Berkeley, uh, that was demolished, uh, by the newest town. Landowner there, so it's one landowner between Berkeley or on Berkeley between Devon and Dorset. Uh, along Devon on those sides, you have sidewalk going north and proper, uh, intersection ramps. This would just help complete the circuit.
Perfect. And they're pretty accurate when they do these drawings, right?
This is an actual site survey, so this is, they were out there with their
Right.
With their, you know.
If if reflections, the lines are angles. Like, can't they do them straight across?
Uh, your your property lines probably aren't straight, uh.
Depending on how they design handicap ramps, they're usually not straight across from one another. Those ramps are like puzzle sets. The crosswalks need to go where they need to go. It's not always a straight line, or not always have right angles to the, uh, streets.
But it's like slow.
Yeah, I look in the window, it forms a box, it looks pretty pretty cute.
And and this image doesn't have topography, so that place enjoy that as well.
Yeah. Just a shame that it's straight.
All those ramps are individually designed and it just happens how the, uh, how the elevations fall where the line, where the crosswalk serving goes.
I would hope so. Great. Well.
Okay, um, any additional board comment? Questions? Uh, any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, moving on to the next item. Cable TV hearing.
It's only for Andy. Yeah, this, uh, hearing makes it probably sound far more formal than it is. It's really it's really a board discussion and an opportunity to hear the public input if there isn't um, on cable issues that are of interest to the township that is used to negotiate. Um, so the Federal Telecommunications Act says you can, you can negotiate with the carrier, um, to reach any terms you want, but there has to be some process to hear from the public. Um, in this case, we were talking about the Verizon franchise, which, uh, technically expired, um, two years ago, three years ago, and you know, Kobe. Um, Verizon knew that, um, it's not a problem, you're still getting paid your franchise, so you could essentially in a franchise, you're giving them use of your rights. Under the Federal Cable Act, cable companies have to come to the local government to have franchise. The federal law basically says you can get up to five percent of their gross revenue attributed to East Town um, as a franchise fee. Years ago, there was sort of a blend in a lot of different municipalities, you might say, you work for two, three, four, five percent. It's really uniform, it's five percent now. Um, what, what the Cohen group does, and you're part of that consortium, is it tries to give you some economy of scale with your fellow municipalities when you negotiate with Verizon. Um, for years, uh, your township solicitors, we would all do them ourselves. In fact, I've taught seminars with the Cohen folks. Um, and we're comfortable, they're, they're good at structuring some of the things that we always kept an eye on, which is, for instance, you want, you want a franchise to have good enforcement power short of revoking a franchise. Um, because to go to Comcast and Verizon and say, um, you're, you haven't been responsive to consumers. We're revoking your franchise. It's a nuclear option that, uh, really never happens. But what we have been able to put in the last Verizon agreement, and I know Cohen's group is working with the consortium to do it again, is have a series of steps, um, that have, in some cases, uh, per diem, uh, fines or liquidated damages um, for certain violations, especially those involving customer service or um, failing to repair an issue or creating a hazard in your right of way. Um, so these, I I think the biggest challenge for municipalities is um, under the federal laws constrained, the fees are constrained to cable service. And that's becoming a more and more gray area of what is actually cable service. So in most municipalities, you're seeing that number creep down a bit, uh, when people maybe they, they're technically cutting the cord, but they're just using, um, they're buying internet service. And then, you know, they're, they're one off getting HBO Max or Apple TV plus under the federal law of cable service. Um, so some of those revenues are going down, so it's important those definitions are in place. Um, so normally, I go back to Cohen after meetings like this and remind them how important that incremental enforcement piece is and how important it is to have the broadest definition of cable and gross revenue. Um, so that you're capturing everything that that your peer municipalities can do. Um, so that's really a summary of where you are in the process, and the Cohen folks, I think, are just getting started with Verizon. Um, and you've got a Comcast agreement that has two renewal periods that are automatic unless, uh, they're happy with. And that basically takes you to twenty forty one with Comcast, but with Verizon right now, Verizon wants to go shorter and shorter. Um, it, the roles have reversed. It used to be the opposite, that municipalities would want things shorter because there might be technology on the horizon that increases your ability to get revenue. But it's pretty clear that's not the path right now. So Verizon tends to like five or ten year deals instead of a traditional ten or fifteen with regular, so we'll see how that goes. But that's the overview, but if the board, um, or the members of the public here have anything specific that you'd like me to relate to your special counsel, who's working with the consortium, uh, I'm here to do that, and that's the purpose of of the agenda. Was that everything you ever wanted to know about cable franchise?
More than my.
I thought, I thought Supervisor Wacey may have some questions.
Yes, I have some questions. Um, so in in the past, you negotiated for us, this is the first time that we're going through this consortium?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, a number of our residents have come to us in various somebody kind and said, why can't we put utilities underground? Is there any room to negotiate that with Verizon?
There really, um, is not under, under the franchising laws and, and in a lot of cases, the way they provide services through poll agreements with your existing public utilities. So it kind of gets back to the things you've talked about before, which is looking for a state law that drives utilities underground. And so you'll see that, you know, if you have a newer development where all the conduits are underground to begin with, um, Comcast or Verizon, they're either negotiating with the HOA if they're own, or with, uh, PICO or whoever owns the main conduit to get in. So most of that, most of the way they work is piggybacking.
So basically, that is what I'm taking that. Um, I know some of the surrounding communities have community access channels and stuff like that provided through these things. Did we just decide not to do that? Is that not available to us?
I'd say if you look locally, especially in Tridifferent, um, and I helped negotiate that many years ago now. Tridifferent had a unique issue because Heron Cables, before everyone started to consolidate, Heron was the local provider and their headquarters were in Tridifferent Township. And I think sort of as a, as a showpiece or model, being the hometown provider, um, they provided, uh, quite a bit of direct funding. Um, when when there was an original renewal with, I think it was Adelphia. Um, we saw those benefits start to reduce in Tridifferent. And by the time you got to the two mega providers, um, it's no longer a situation where the cable companies are funding that. In fact, in Tridifferent, I believe their, their, um, cable management organizer who runs the public system is now a Tridifferent employee. So that has transferred into Tridifferent's own costs. The other thing that's a little tricky is under the cable act, a cable operator can put all those costs on the consumer. So even if they quote unquote give it to you for free, the consumer will ultimately pay. Um, and, and I think frankly, what I've seen, I know Don experienced some of the same stuff in Radnor, which I think was also a unique situation in Radnor, but with high-speed internet now and your ability, for instance, to stream like you do, um, it used to be people couldn't watch unless, unless you had cable access. And now that's, you've sort of overcome that with technology.
We can put it on YouTube.
Right.
Away we go.
Yeah.
Um, so the, like, Tridifferent Tridifferent has cable access, or cable access channel, right, that they use?
Yes.
So the same as the TE school district, is it the same channel?
It's a, it's a partnership, really, so Tridifferent, as I understand it, and I'm not an expert on this, but, you know, the school district, um, originally had the studio that Tridifferent would use as well, and then, and it used to be the head end went in through there. And then when the new building was built, that was sort of the last hurrah for that leverage where we got the studio out of it. Um, but I think they work together. So sometimes you hear PEG, Public Educational and Governmental Access. Um, public access where people are actually providing local programming from citizens. Um, we're seeing less of that. The E is for the schools and the G is for you. Yeah.
That's, that's my question.
Any other questions or comments?
Hi, uh, Mike Baskin for One Avenue, um. I have two hats here. So, uh, I actually am the contractor for T School District for their, uh, educational channel, so
Our expert.
I tend to tell you that, uh, they do have, uh, their own channel. One thing that we've asked probably the last ten years is, uh, if, uh, they would start carrying the channel in HD instead of standard definition because they refuse to accept the bandwidth. Um, and what that's actually done is reduced the amount of viewership, um, although we are doing, um, streaming. Um, we're able to stream in much higher quality than, uh, the television station, uh, allows us to, uh, to broadcast out, um. But, uh, the one point I wanted to make, uh, a different note is, um, in the franchise agreement, uh, the, uh, the cable companies provide internet and television to, uh, I think, library, school buildings, uh, township building. Uh, there's a couple of like local type, uh, services that get that through the franchise agreement. Uh, unfortunately, the fire company doesn't take advantage of that because it's the slowest, uh, possible internet speed that they offer, um, and like the most basic cable that they offer. Um, and so made the same request like seven or eight years ago, last time this was done. Um, you know, we, we need business class, high-speed internet, uh, to support all the, uh, the things that we do in the station. Um, so we're paying Verizon six, seven hundred dollars a month, um, for business class speeds, uh, and for cable for the station. Um, seems to me that them offering that lowest of the lows is a deterrent, even though it's like, looks good on paper, it doesn't really equate to something very useful. Um, because e- even like our phone system wouldn't support the level of speed in which they're, they're offering. Uh, so my, my request would be that to make that, um, more viable of a, an offer to your schools and emergency services, those kind of places that they uh, offer a much higher level of, uh, of service. And I don't think it really would be detrimental to them to do that, uh, but it would save the fire company seventy thousand dollars a year. Be detrimental to them to do that, um, but it would save the fire company seventy thousand dollars a year. You know.
We face the same issue, right? Um, like. We have to pay for internet service because they invited us.
We paid for it and you know, what arrangement.
This would. If we use this, we can get the lowest possible, which probably wouldn't work.
Well, part of, part of the issue is that the internet service is not able. So what you have in your current franchise is basic service, which is sort of the. The base package of broadcasting or you know, that that you would buy from Comcast or Verizon.
Right.
In your Verizon one, we do include each municipal building, fire station, but.
Again, basics.
Right, and and the cable operators will always say, well, internet's something else. But that doesn't mean we can't. And one of the reasons we're in the consortium is if enough of you um. You raise that issue, maybe there is some negotiating power. So why don't I put it on the list and we'll. We'll ask Mike uh, Cohen to focus on that if you don't like.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Uh, moving on to the D C E D grant resolution.
Uh, so a couple of months ago, uh, Bowman started to prepare the grant application for uh, D C E D. The multimodal transportation grant available for sidewalk along Newtown. From Deerwood to Beaumont. Uh, this is just the standard resolution that would be um. Voted on by the Board of Supervisors authorizing uh. The amount there in concurrence with the amount uh, prepared for the grant. And acknowledgement that the grant is being submitted on behalf of Easttown Township. Uh, it would, this grant would be for eighty-five percent of the total project. Uh, which we are requesting nine hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars.
Questions? Motion to approve the resolution? I'll say, any other board comment?
Any public comment?
I just have a question about that. I live on Newtown Room, um, seventeen Newtown Room. Is there any public comment about the latest plan or has there already been?
Uh, well, the. The, it will go before the application is submitted. It will be in front of the Board of Supervisors one last time, just so they can understand what's being.
I mean, neighborhood. Uh, I mean, has this been presented to the neighborhood?
Well, it was discussed at a couple of public meetings, the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, but this is just for the grant. So. Uh, no final design has been completed. So once the final design or. Preliminary final design is prepared, uh, we can coordinate with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. So I have, I was at that planning commission meeting. And I just think the way it's being designed, you know, it's, I don't have children and I'm not, you know, trying to get them to Beaumont School, but I think that. Current plan is very circuitous route and I just think it would be good for the township to get that neighborhood's. Input into.
Absolutely.
You know, you're sure that they're gonna use it in base.
Absolutely.
Any other public comment? All right, on favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
I say it. Moving on to item J, Chester County Mutual Aid Plan.
Uh, Dave and Andy.
You know, we start Andy's or, so this is something that the chief's been kicking off for a number of years now, trying to get something more uniform for mutual aid. Um, which occurs a lot in accounting if we share resources a lot. So this is about the. I don't know how many iterations we've seen of this now, but to where we're finally. Yeah, to at least where we're comfortable presenting it to the board. It's been signed off on now by quite a few municipalities. And we're just kind of, you know. We're getting into it now. We've looked at it. We're happy where it is. So we're going to get time to present it to the board.
I think where uh, Dave has been clear throughout in terms of the comments that we provide. To the, to the broader working groups is some of the early iterations almost mandated. At least on paper, that you're going to give officers, um, if there's an emergency. And the language that we're now a lot more comfortable with, it's all about requests. And there are frameworks for that request. So the bigger your department, the more officers you have on the shift. The, the more proportional your uh, the request that will come to you for aid. But the way it reads now. We feel better about it because you're still, you're putting Easttown first that you're not, you're not going to sacrifice coverage here. Because another municipality has a problem. Um, but I think Dave will tell you when you have. What I call a pure mutual aid incident where I mean, things are in crisis mode. Everybody provides everything they can.
Yeah, and that's the way we want it. We were just more cautious about the mandatory end of it where. You know, we're present, we're providing things that it's going to weaken us here. So, yeah. Once we were comfortable with that, we thought it was a good time.
So with that giving you uh, a lot more control, um, you see in the packet, you've got a resolution. Um, but essentially it would just, uh, the action item is the board wants to do it, it would be um. To approve the resolution, which would have Easttown enter into the mutual aid plan.
Uh, well, I see no problem with the township entering into that uh, arrangement. Does anyone have any thoughts or comments?
Sure. If we deploy somebody, can we recall them that that are, that are decision? It's just like we have to wait for them to.
No, that's part of, you know, what we were looking for where it wasn't mandatory. So if we need them back, we could bring it back. I mean, capital county is probably the biggest thing you guys have seen with this, where we were providing all the servers and. You know, everybody in accounting was kind of helping, you know.
Right, right.
You hope you never need it, but you want somebody to reciprocate if we do.
Yeah, exactly. Um, this is, is this distinct from the SWAT? I'm not, I know that's not the right term for it, if there's SWAT.
Yes, the SWAT's its own entity, more or less. This is more for the department as a whole to share resources.
Okay, so it, the SWAT has its own.
They have their own rules, their own engagement. This is more for the patrol end of things if people need bodies.
Right, right.
And I think you've entered into that separate operating agreement.
We did with SWAT, yep.
What about facilities like we have at Drone?
That's kind of all part of it, you know, when you provide manpower, you're also be provide. Somebody needs a drone or cars, whatever. Yeah, like our U T V vehicle, we just loaned at the Radnor where it's been, so those kinds of.
And this is just Chester County.
This is just Chester.
The room, maybe a separate mutual aid for the county or.
We don't, but since we border Radnor, we're able to share services much easier.
Well, we did that ad hoc. We did that if they need, we don't have an agreement with.
No, I mean, we, yeah, we far from them. They were, they gave us barricades during the uh, dual tide and we've just always shared. Thanks for better neighbors.
Right, I don't know, it's true enough that we get a, we strongly get a lot from Tridifferent, right? Like, do they get more plus than we get from them? Or I think it's fairly, it's fairly. Yeah, I mean, it seems like everybody ready one name. Okay.
Another board comment or questions? Yeah, um, make a motion to approve the resolution, you have a second. Uh, any other board comment? Any public comment? None on favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I say it. Thanks, Alex. Next on the agenda is departments will report thirty items that supervisor will allow or. Step to our attention.
The dumb, we're still working. Is that say about?
Yeah, that's a big item that presumably we talked about, uh, when at the uh. The ASR report shows you've got a sizable capital initiative coming from the V F S A. And the, a drive by some members and we are one of them. That you don't, when you make a capital contribution on that scale. You have some say, some kind of ownership, right? Some say like that. Uh, that's being resisted by without some sewer funding. So we are uh, still trying to just press them for that. Anything more about your committee and viewpoint?
We have a, the liaison report, I think that would be the best time for that. Good question about the finance report. So we are now getting the financial report correctly out of yours, right?
Uh, you're getting the year of the staff chapter.
Right. But it seems like they're getting copied of it, because it's sort of till fit away, but like, are they printing it out of yours and then making copies of that what I'm seeing in here?
Yes, what else would you want? I'm not sure what's.
When you just upload the file, it comes right out of yours.
I can probably do that if you want.
Okay, it, it just looks like it was.
Comes to me in a paper form. It gets all marked up with a hundred million notes and a hundred million lines. The clean copy gets run through the scanner given. So if that's. Less than what you want, we can look at doing it in a manner that's more than less than what you want.
I mean, what I want, like I said before, is I want direct access to, not update access, but being able to read directly.
Yeah, you're reading directly off of means, you're reading directly. Any others?
Uh, moving on to regular business, is there a question counter?
Yeah, so just to have your comment, last couple of years, there's nothing to do with, uh, just that idea of moving from general to particular. And uh, kind of noting that uh, we're not set up to make revolutions or change in. Six weeks or at least before, that we talk about that things, over the course of the year. Uh, we'll start bringing some things to you, the idea of moving from general to particular, solidifying. For all intents and purposes, the budget has to be solidified by November. You've been approving it in the first week. Any question?
Yeah, we're, we're incorporating those department changes. I see that you asked if you can see this firm filter, I'm just like, well, they practice maybe. Adds or changes from the department.
Soon as they get in, so uh, they, they need to communicate to you what they want. That'll be, come inform of your sports, our reports. And then you can tell us what kind of things are going to be in maybe, like it's. Uh, it's more of just the last call, because a lot of times what I'll have is full, filled, filled. So before we did that, they would ask in December. For something. So it's sort of letting them know that's.
It would have to be March for something, but I hear.
Yeah, I was about to say, that's just like uh. There's a pressure point, it seems, where like, for whatever reason, the A B Cs don't say stuff. I thought it was a good idea. No, I think, no, and that, I think it isn't, like, just so they know about it, because I feel like this. A lot of A B Cs that felt like, this was all a big surprise. So just sort of a reminder to them that we work on a budget schedule. If they want something, they gotta get it towards some time that it could be in the budget.
That great. Then I get my observations. I've learned that you're doing that. I like the idea that we set the budget in twenty twenty-five and execute the budget in twenty twenty-six and don't change there. I think that's a, actually a good thing.
Very good. Um, anybody else have a? Yeah. All common? None. Uh, moving on to my ASR work reports. First up was the Berlin Business. Uh, moving on to the Citizen Communication Advisory Board. Um, that's not, that's the last meeting we had, if I recall. They met initially and then I got. Is there a meeting?
There, yes, James.
We had a good little session. We just continued the stuff that we had talked to you about. Uh, got some valuable input. We're trying to get the communications. This is the biggest, broadest description of all. That the communications shouldn't be sort of ad hoc, like, hey, if I review it, would have been better if we had known more about that. If they come up with a. Sort of like a pattern so that we respond knowingly and purposefully things and. The elements, because it wasn't the pattern that we developed. To do that, they need to better understand what we do now. So that's really the lion's share of it is describing our current practices so that they can figure out. How to improve the practices going forward.
They looked through his chair, Sheldon's wife's chair, like I had that. They, the thing you're doing, they have a big long discussion about what's the purpose of communication. Then they talked about the website, what they do to that and they talked about the trash, how it can take it now.
We're trying to include a little bit in specifics, but their goal is more general. Their goal is to, to help us create a pattern, not to improve one thing. They didn't like to come in and prove the website we've done. It's to improve that sort of pattern of. Brilliant communication. I think, uh, we got to E C A.
So E C A has a number of projects, so account simplification, budget simplification. Like fund balance, policy, investment policy, accounting assistance, capital. The open access module and the bank, the idea of a bank R R P. They discussed in great detail each one of those items, each one of those projects where they stand. Um, and some of them will be coming to us relatively soon, within a month or so. Others will take a wander.
And they, they did recommend that the township go to issue an R F P for banking services. I, and I don't, I tried to put that in my memo, but I might have hit the wrong button. So I don't think it got to you this month, but they did make that recommendation. And in it, my suggestion is you let us address that at the finance work group. So we can sort of flesh out what you're trying to get from it. If, I, I, I don't know what you're trying to get from it at this point, so I think we need to flush that out. And so no action at the moment. I've let us flush that out a little bit at the work.
Uh, moving on to the E M A. Is Alex still here?
E M A spoke. Yeah, mostly as well as the capital funding and the borrowing for it.
Yeah, V F A is a big item there. Uh, you got the financial component, which is about three point eight million. They're looking at. Uh, you're bringing the banker in at the next meeting. Uh, they're looking at making a recommendation to you to. Borrow a modest amount of money to pay the V F S A, do a couple of their own projects and. Build a nest, have a process that lets them stay so that every time a project comes along, they're not trying to figure out how to spend.
So, um, I went to the E M A, very upsetting in my mind. Um, we spent. We joined an agreement with the V F S A back in nineteen seventy. And apparently three townships own it and the rest of us are customers of it. And you would think if you own it, you pay for, you know, upkeep and what, if you're a customer, you just pay a fee. And they sort of down one like that, except we paid what forty thousand dollars a year in uh, capital costs, which. Is pretty de minimis out of the millions. We paid them a million dollars a year in expenses. The forty thousand dollars, I guess, went under the radar. Now they're asking us for hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars for capital improvements. But we're a customer, why would we be paying capital improvements? We should be paying the fees, right? So if they want us to pay capital improvements, we should be um, a part owner in the thing. We shouldn't just be a customer. And there, the three owners are saying, why would we let you do that, right, kind of thing? Um, as I was listening to this, I'm thinking, we shouldn't, we should not give them any money for the capital improvements until we get an agreement on this. This ownership thing. Um, it's just crazy that we would, our business would spend that much money on this thing and get nothing for it. The, the worst case scenario is they do all these improvements and then sell the, the system for twenty-eight million or, I don't know, two hundred eighty million or whatever it would go for and we get nothing. And the, the three owners split the proceeds. And we paid, you know, a large portion of that. It's just seemed wrong to me. Like incredibly wrong. Think there's no way we should be doing this. And I know there's the nineteen seventy agreement, but that was a long time ago. I don't think that, you can't have a, a perpetual agreement, right? That, that just can't exist. I, I don't quite understand how they did that. Um, we need to figure out a way.
So so that is what, that's the central issue that they're attempting for attempts. So I think you've characterized it accurately, and uh. I guess what it was ten thousand dollars a year, it wasn't such a big deal, it wasn't worth fighting about, but at. Really eight million dollars over five years, it's worth. Making us think, so uh we're we're trying to coordinate. With other municipalities who are in the same situation as us, so we're sort of building that relationship with. Willis Town, Tridifern, Malvern, East Whitman, and uh. The E M A is evaluating the scenarios from. You know, getting along the most and making the least change to the most change with getting along least, so uh. E M A solicitor involved, Andy involved less, but you know, uh because he's resident view. Uh as it becomes more firm, I'll be involved more.
There's no, is there any like state regulation on this, or is it? It seems like they can, they're saying what they want to say, and we just.
Yeah, I I don't, I wouldn't, I don't know enough to know what would regulate it or not regulate it, I know it's complex, I know that uh. And I would, I characterize. You know, the E M A's attorney represented the idea I could, I, the way I heard it was. You you have a reasonable expectation that if you're giving them large amounts of money. That you have some some control, exactly what that is, is pretty open, the nineteen seventies agreement is very. Open ended and largely silent to a lot of these things. So there's no, there's no great super clarity that lets everybody. Uh absolutely be right, both sides have their opinions and we. We're all trying to get along, so uh E M A is trying to flesh out what it thinks it's recommended, or what its recommendation will be. It will ultimately make a recommendation to you. You control all the money that leaves, so you have. You know, sizable control on that also.
Right, and I think we should be very careful about sending them, they get this money, we can put it in an escrow account or whatever, but until this gets resolved, it makes no sense to send them more. We we can obviously, the operational stuff, yes, we would pay pay that, but this this capital call, we should not pay.
And and you know, that isn't for tonight, that isn't, what you'll get is a recommendation from the E M A, having. Having considered everything in the spectrum, and then you'll get to.
Yeah, the sense I got from the E M A is, oh, well, we gotta pay it. That was, that was the feeling I got in that meeting, I just don't feel that way at all.
Very good, I I don't think that that was, I didn't interpret it that way, but uh either regardless, you'll be a. We're working on a formal recommendation from them, from them to you. Circle of August at the latest, which lets you then act on on it.
Um like, there's no other options, right? Or just, I don't know.
Yeah, there are other options lately, there's no, no like tomorrow option, right?
No, I'm just saying with the the V V S I, we can.
No alternative.
No alternative destination, that's. We could go, but I mean, it would be a huge capital expense, and it would take years, but we could send this sewage south. If there was a capacity and all those kinds of things, so it's not a slam dunk, and it's not something we can do tomorrow.
It there's, there's no short or medium term alternative to the destination. Uh we, well, independent of this, on this, on the staff side. We have ideas about uh things like separating, you know, doesn't make sense to send, to pump it. All the way across the township to the other side, but you get, there's a lot of complications after.
And pumping is complicated, right, you know, obviously you got pumps, you got high pressure. Pump pipes that goes through, if you send it through gravity, it's a lot more simple.
It's just, you do know that it's very, very mutually complex. Decades of legal work, decades of engineering work to change that, so that that's a, that's a long term problem. The Valley for Assure Authority is expecting nine hundred thousand dollars every by, from you by June, so that's an immediate problem, that's a. That's one you've got to solve in the next.
That's in twenty twenty six.
Ju- June of twenty six, yeah, mid mid year is the target time. Nine ninety thousand is the payment for next year.
I I'm gonna bring up something else completely unrelated that, unless anybody has a question about that.
That relates to the E M A?
Yes, very much so. Um and and the, that I for sure are. Um the atmosphere is underneath us is is roughly empty, or getting close to empty. The, that's that's why we're seeing all these sinkholes in in the area. But then the problem is that we pump water, and we don't, but other communities pump water, how did they get, put it. Through the V F S A or some facility like that, and then put it in the the river, which goes out to the um ocean. Which then ten thousand years later shows back up in the aquifer. Right, so the aquifer dry and it's not gonna fiddle anytime soon. I just saw a thing about Virginia is putting in processes to pump water from their. The sewer treatment plants back into the aquifer. We need to start thinking about that, because otherwise this whole, this whole area of the country is gonna subside, so. We, it, I I know everybody says it's not my issue or it's too big for us, but if nobody takes it on, it's never gonna get solved. And it needs to get solved, and I would, I would be perfectly happy that the F S A would say, and they could. Instead of pumping water into the Skoko River, they pump water into the aquifer.
Um is the finance work group?
I don't think we've met since. June fourth, we met. We're getting good interest now, we. Um Sue has done a great job consolidating accounts, getting the bank to pay the interest, um okay. It's running by forty thousand a month.
Almost forty five.
So that's great, um. Uh we're speaking, we're in issue with Aqua and their invoicing, and we were looking at getting a better way to invoice them. Figure out how to pay, pay them, that's for the, 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 what's that? And A C H, we talked about A C H and um for credit card payments, right? Is that, did you want to prove it for that?
I I just think we can, so we're gonna, we're gonna do some, we're gonna pay the credit cards with an A C H transfer, so. Only it needs any, right, price, distinct approval from you. Authorize, it'll just show up on your bill list as an A C H payment instead of a check payment.
I think I covered everything there.
And, you know, we did have good news on the E I T last week, so we did, uh they did communicate to us that the. We would receive three hundred and twenty thousand for Q one, so that's a sizable payment that makes Q one. On target for budget revenue, for the budget revenue. Haven't received cash yet, but we received notice that we're receiving the cash. Uh moving on to the fire A M S task force.
We're meeting Wednesday, I think, I'd say, yeah.
Yeah, I have one item for that, uh. So the uh, the Red Fire Company wants to submit a safer grant. Uh they need a letter of support from the municipalities. Uh and they'll, it's, the deadline is before your meeting in July. So we kicked it around and turned it on the staff, we don't think there's really any risk for you to support the grant. Uh because you can choose to not get it, there are, there might be some details, or you could choose to not accept it if it was problematic. There might be some details, but our sense on the staff side was uh. That's a nice luxury to have, if you get a grant for that amount of money, there's all the details, you chase the details there.
Right.
So if you let you object, we would uh. Staff level, we would provide the support, and then we would have you ratify it at your next meeting in July. I think that works, right?
Right, this is same as last year, same size.
Uh I'll leave.
And it's three year, they've paid for three year, right?
Uh so the the big change of this year is that it's uh their match is required. So uh for a five year period there during COVID, uh from COVID on, they eliminated the match requirement. Uh that opened up the floodgate, so every company in the country flies for it, whether they had a good plan or not. Uh so that was the big change. And then it is a diminishing return, so year one is when they reimburse seventy five percent of payroll costs, year two is that. Uh triples down.
Okay, so twenty five percent match first, the first year.
Yes. And then if you. If you, if you put in for six and you're only able to hire three in the first year. You can still hire three the following year, they just started that second year uh benefit to the township, so it's uh, it's still a savings for their.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
It's a very competitive grant, and I think in Pennsylvania, there's, I think there's a total of four paid awards last year total.
Didn't Lower Merin get a big one?
They got a big one. So.
That's what makes everybody think we can do it, too.
Maybe we can.
Yeah.
Answers no unless yes, though.
Very good, uh moving on to the historical commission.
Uh wasn't able to attend, not from German, I believe that it was small, small.
Uh yes, so there's a um historic marker unveiling on Sunday. Uh that's at ten AM at the Farmers Market in front of Brown's Building, which is where the marker is, or will be. Uh then there's just a number of smaller applications, the the big takeaway was the uh. This is one marker, and then that belongs to a lot of this.
And they're uh advertising that, I saw it on Instagram, so it's.
Yeah, Susan made it, I said.
Uh moving on to library board trustees.
Uh library, uh met on the twenty eighth May, um. So some things the county is requesting to approve, a request to approve audit. And since actually doing it at all their libraries, everything's good with the our library, uh Don was there. Um as a stakeholder, doing a stakeholder series, and they're just talking to people within. Different positions within the community, the township, and we shared some of his views um about the library. Um how township works for the library, uh the foundation. Uh as fundraising continues, they've raised money to put towards improving the maker space uh within. Uh the library. Um the Friends book sale is doing well, and they were presented twenty five thousand dollar gift to the library. And they raised nine thousand dollars was raised at the Red White and Bubbly event. Uh they have a leap for literacy program they're running in America two fifty, they've made plans. Um for the library, the community art project, uh this summer will run to twenty twenty six. They're doing a base needs assessment, uh sending to consultants to see what is needed. Um so also discussion of state and local library funding due to federal budget cuts. And overview of state and local funding, and what's going to happen in twenty six is up in the air, so. That was what was discussed at the library meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh next up, Parks and Rec.
Direct are planning a Fourth of July event, they're looking for volunteers. And uh look at some sign options for. The park, um.
I guess mention Susan, uh next was the pension work group.
I was not. Our graduation day, so.
Uh we met, uh Matt had the presentation, you know, the funds follow the general pattern of the markets, so. Well, no, not, not all of those. Doing and volatile. Uh volatile and then volatile lately, you know, you're trying to, you know, sixty seven percent, up sixty seven percent over uh. Five years, you know, down five percent year to date kind of thing, and uh like so, up and down. They're not causing a change in any of your thinking, I think, there. Uh next up is the planning commission.
Planning commission, that's sort of a sleepy meeting, not too much.
Um. Public Works, we're very, in our first meeting. Yes, it was good, it was mostly about organizing, we are, what we're giving. Oh, I I heard we are going to a forty can. I actually met him on Friday, so. Uh very personal. We're trying to be in truck in July, because that's the one.
Uh currently, Ford has it, we're waiting for the body to come in at a rock there, and Ford will deliver it, should be, you know, shortly, so hopefully. Late July, be able to get it up there.
We'll start getting kind of involved in, yes, additions.
But we're a little bit more, a little bit more working independently on the on this, so.
Even so, he's already started, right, because on.
Yes, yeah, he's, it's a. He's a combination of working with others, but working independently on arts things that are your initiatives to the job.
Right.
Last but not least, the store order management advisory.
Uh SMAC discussed M S four and the options for pollutant reduction plan number three, which is the uh stream restoration at Hilltop.
I got one item for that, so yeah, uh this came to us last day or two. Uh Tridifern has a growing greater grant, they're asking for your support. Uh again, we wanted to sign it and get it back to them, it's a. It's the sort of thing you support, uh it's like concrete, can't hurt you, uh showing, unless you're object, we could. Have it signed, and we're just putting it in here, it can be sent to agenda. That works.
And this is just, I think their application for a rest, we don't get anything out of it.
Correct, okay. You know, arguably, you get the environmental benefit that it provides, as if those downstreams are released. And that's what is. Forge among. Okay, uh moving on to your public comment.
I have a public comment, sure, yes. Um so, well, I should say, it's something my attention, I've been working with the uh. Trinity Presbyterian Church, they're putting their food bank on there, what they currently have. Should use the right term, pantry, they currently have a service, they buy very limited, they're expanding it to that. First, like, there's center, second Saturday, July, and ongoing after that, their second, third, second quarter Saturdays, everything. Uh it's a great facility for our township, uh for revenue, and East Town actually, I think I read. That Tridifern in East Town have about three hundred families right now, where their food is secure, um so. That person won't get the word out to anybody who meets that, but that, that it's available. Um but also their residents, residents need help, right, that they can help buy, buy food, to go back, and there's a list of food they provide. They can help buy volunteer, and it's pretty, but it's, it takes a lot of people to work up. And for, that drives the right jumps out of the banks, food pantry. Um and so, so, you know, all of these are great, so I guess it's completely. At a future meeting, um recognize them for doing this, and there's another one, uh the Methodist church running for long. Yeah, and just thank them for doing this in our community, so. Seems like something important, wasn't it?
Well, I mean, it seems like something that benefits our community, and it's. For the reason. Here, so. From my perspective, I mean, I think it makes sense to provide maybe a sort of megaphone. So I'll get the message out, if that's possible, I don't know, I'll go through the website, add something in. Support, most, I rarely get support East Town residents, so that's very important. Obviously, so I think that's something about the recognition, I don't know, this, that's important, is getting the message out.
That's what they want, is the message to get out, so they they have to come explain, let people know what they need to do, the volunteers. If you just, you know, to translate something.
Yeah, and we have a communication. Just fine, so you you want it as an agenda item then, or a little. Presentation, probably, I'm not sure, you want to present, so they just want. I mean, I don't know these people, so like, is it something that they just want message?
They just want a seven hour break, and so what I'm thinking is if they saw our agenda, or hear about it, they happen to come to the meeting, know them about it. I think that's what we.
You can miss out if they hear about it.
Yes.
What's the location?
It's. Sure, we also fit into work. Again, recognition is not what they're working for.
Well, no, but you gotta get the word out.
Yes, that's.
Bigger entities can help.
Okay, so I'm hearing the newsletter and. Coordination with the library, options. That works. Whatever, whatever matter that.
Yeah, whatever.
Well, we want to work with them, I guess, take away. Right, whatever they, you know, I don't know if it's those things. Township website or whatever they think is so important.
That's way more than they asked for. Again, just two minutes here.
Yeah, if that, you know, that's be set already. Our, our massive audience, I, uh, my concern is that uh there are better ways to get their message out for a very important cause. Surely. Okay, guys, any other little comment? Anyone online? Hey, uh announcements are available on the township websites. Uh what we're doing is a session.
Yes.
Uh real estate, personal. Yes, there are majorly executives such as meeting. Well, as mentioned, uh I'd much be adjourned, so. Very.